Good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, November 29, 2016. Calling the Board of Selectmen for the town of Hingham meeting to order. First item is approval of the minutes, November 17, 2016. Motion to approve the minutes is written.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other comment? Hearing none. Get right to business. The PEC agreement. Mr. Alexiades, would you take us through that, please, sir?
Sure. In your folders, you have the agreement that we just finished concluding, literally about two hours ago, with the Public Employee Committee. The Public Employee Committee is a committee set up by statute, represents each of the one member of each of the unions that are in the town. We've met with them several times over the last three months to negotiate this agreement. And what this agreement does is continue the prior mitigation agreement and add a couple of new items to it. Specifically, it adds that the town will allow the mitigation funds to cover the cost of high-tech imaging, so MRIs and CAT scans. So the deductibles related to that will be covered by this mitigation agreement, in addition to the previous ones, which were inpatient hospital stays and outpatient procedures. And there's a deductible associated with that that was raised when we moved to this health care plan. And again, in this proposal, those costs will be there, and we're mitigating them in their entirety for employees of the town. In addition, the group asked for, in the month of November of 2017, each single subscriber will receive a $75 credit from this fund, and every married subscriber planned will receive $150 credit. And in return for all of this, the town's commitment of a half a million dollars is being spread out of $100,000 a year over the next five years. So rather than providing that all upfront, we will provide it over five years, giving us budget relief over that period of time. We have in the audience Chris Mollinson, who is the chairman of the PEC, and Billy McIntyre, who is the co-chair of the PEC. I'm glad they're here. I hope they speak to this, but I'm going to speak ahead of them, thanking them for their efforts. They were instrumental to getting all the unions to understand and agree with this, not just at the PEC meeting, but the two gentlemen here attended a meeting with the HEA last week, and, you know, on their own time, outside of work hours, to deal with these issues. And tremendous benefit to everybody in the town. This agreement is also includes essentially a vote for you to move into the GIC for all the town health plans. MGL Chapter 32B, Section 21 and 23 allows us to have this discussion with our unions through the PEC, come to an agreement, come up with a mitigation plan. The vote and why you have a special meeting tonight. In order to join the GIC, you have to notify them prior to December 1st. You do not need to notify Plymouth County until December 31st, and we'll have a vote. We weren't prepared to give it to you tonight. We'll have a vote on the agenda for Thursday, for you to formally notify them that you'll be withdrawing. As I roll out the budget to you on Thursday, you'll see, you know, numbers that were closer to $2 million in the hole, now you'll see numbers closer to about a half a million dollars in the hole, which is a substantial difference at this point in time in the budget process. And, you know, without this agreement in place and without moving into the GIC this year, it would be hard for me to see the town balancing its budgets without either dipping significantly into reserves for operating expenses or reducing staff across all departments. So it's my recommendation that you guys agree with the PEC and approve the agreement.
Before my colleagues get into questioning, to the extent they have any, gentlemen, I'd like to thank you very much, sincerely. I don't take this for granted, and I kind of went...
That sounds a lot, too, you know, so a little extra work that we did is...
Well, it's a lot of extra work, and, you know, you deserve a lot of credit for that. Thank you for your leadership in this role. Really, truly appreciate that. If my colleagues have anything they'd like to add...
I'd like me one here from the members first. I don't know if they tended to speak, but obviously, if someone wants to join us, you can...
Welcome to join us at the table if you'd like.
Come on up, guys.
You need to go to the microphone so that the...
Why don't you guys sit at the table? That way, it's right in front of you, you can pass it between you. I don't know if the board knows, the last time we did this, Mr. McIntyre was president of the fire union, and he was chairman of the Public Employee Commission. He's no longer president of the fire union, but he still volunteered. And I think he went to a PEC meeting, and they all roped him into being vice chair.
Yeah. That was a new experience for myself. I've only been the union president for about a year now. So Billy's been nice enough to help me out in terms of... He was nice enough to join along on this, because he's had some experience with it in the past.
Few years. I was on the original PEC commission when we had it at the old town hall back in...
Mid-'90s.
Yeah, that's the mid-'90s. Yeah. And I was the chairman, as Ted said last time around, and, you know, I'm sitting in on it and trying to weigh the differences, reaching out to all contacts and trying to find out where we stood, you know. It's not an easy process to understand when you have to sit down and look at it, and it's not even... It's less easy to try to turn around and explain it to others. But, you know, to the extent of sitting down and meeting with the teachers and, you know, trying to explain where we stood as far as the other collective bargaining units stood, you know, where we were at and what the, you know, what the differences were. And I think that a lot of what happened was just misinformation. They didn't have all the information, and when we sat down in a more open forum and gave them some time to look at it and understand it, they basically came to, you know, their own decision and decided that, you know, based on the new information, that, you know, their vote was obviously considerably different. So...
Several of the unions had complained during the process about the compressed schedule. And, you know, these guys were able to help us communicate, as we did, too. The compressed schedule is a part forced on us. We can't... We have to make a decision by December 1st, but yet we can't really begin that process until we get the data from our history throughout the year, which July, August, and September. So we don't have a lot of time to get data. And, you know, if we do this in August, then we're not going to get data earlier than, you know, say, May, because that data's not available yet. So we didn't wind up getting data to see how our health claims were, to just make a determination about whether the GIC was the best option, Mayflower, all these other options were available for us. So it was a very compressed schedule, and a lot of information came out very quickly. And that's... Can be difficult, challenging. So that's why I wanted to point out their efforts to wade into a very heavy level. I mean, the package we got from the GIC is an inch thick, and we got to go through it. We got to understand the health plans and be able to communicate to people a very important decision about someone's life, you know, their health care choices, so...
No questions from my colleagues? A couple... And this may not be directed to you guys directly, but you can jump in if you need to. And the December 1st deadline is for whose requirement, again?
The GIC has a requirement. The towns that want to join for the following fiscal year must make their recommendation by December... Must make the request and application by December 1st.
And that's what this meeting's about?
Correct.
So I guess, you know, obviously, thank you very much, gentlemen, and I'm sure there are others that were working on this, and all the unions that were involved. But I just try to understand, what was the sticking point at some point? I know there was... Maybe there was a difference between some of the unions as to whether to stay or go, and maybe it would be helpful to me to understand what those issues were.
There was... We had a vote meeting one night, and all our votes came back, and I think almost every union had voted to go to the GIC but the teachers. And just with talking to the representatives from the teachers' unions, it seemed to us like they didn't really get all the information. They have 400-plus members, where, you know, I only have 40-something guys to report to, and they have 400. So it was tougher for them to get the information out. So we volunteered to type up a letter, to email out to all of their members that they could review all the facts, and then for us to go and speak with them, you know, on a personal note, you know, union to union, yay, we're all in this together, you know, and just have a discussion about it to clarify everything. And their vote drastically changed after that, so...
Because I know this is... Come on, everybody, quickly, I understand. And I was understanding that they took actually a vote initially went the other direction. Is that what you were referring to?
Correct. They took a vote in early November to stay with the Mayflower Plymouth County Health Care, and then this vote, subsequent to their conversations, they took a vote to move into the GIC.
And we... And just... It's really kind of a side issue, but do we have anybody that we relied on to get us the information in terms of, you know, the details? I know there's a lot to go through.
Are you referring to like the health insurance information itself?
Well, yeah, trying to make the decision. I was... The little I've been able to look into it, you know, I understand there may be some consultants involved that did some of the work.
Yeah, the consultants were very good about getting us any and all information that we had.
We had two consultants. The MTA provided a consultant for the teachers. Name, I believe, was John Broder.
Yes.
And the town provided a consultant, Patrick Harridan. And Patrick is the same consultant we used the previous memorandum of agreement back in 2012. And at the time, when we chose that consultant, the number of people in town, both management and the unions, were concerned about the choice of the consultant. Prior town administrator had selected a consultant that he had an employment arrangement with, and that created a little bit of controversy. So when we went through this three... Five years ago, I brought three consultants in. I asked them if they wanted to bring any others in. I said, "Why don't you interview these three and tell me which ones you want?" So essentially, we picked the consultant jointly five years ago. So it was easy to go back to him. I've provided him complete access without me being there to all the unions, so that, you know, everybody clearly understands, and I think these guys would relate to it, the information I have is the same information they have. And so we were able to come to the same decisions pretty easily. And I don't think the consultants gave us a recommendation. I think it was really just our consensus, because the numbers were so compelling. It was cut and dry to us.
They presented us with the information, and it just kind of spoke for itself.
So Patrick did not make a recommendation to the town at all, chief folks? And the teachers' consultant initially recommended to go with stick with Mayflower?
No, they actually did not, no. That was... That was one of our concerns, is that the teachers' consultant, who, you know, had spoken with our consultant and was on the same page and thought our decision was appropriate, wouldn't make an opinion to the teachers originally. He just... He said he wasn't able to.
All right. So these consultants didn't make an opinion initially the way that...
Correct.
No, what they did was clarify a lot of the misnomers, things that people... Rumors, conjecture, nothing was concrete. A lot of the things that people had in their minds from the different unions were, you know, the different copayments, and they were getting information that was piecemeal, and a lot of it was incorrect information. And actually, Pat was instrumental during our meetings to answer questions that were brought up by the teachers and the paras as to regarding different things that they were... They were afraid they would get involved in something that they couldn't afford, or that the payments would be different, or the copayments would change. And there really wasn't any clarity to any of that. A lot of it was just more rumor than anything else. Bringing it down, getting it to an understandable basis where everybody understood the information was this, you know, we were able to answer questions to individuals, we were able to dispel any of the rumors and any of the non-clarified information. So it was a great help to have Pat there, and the other gentleman was a great help during our meetings. You know, we were able to at least come to a common ground so we could understand, so we could bring it back to our people and explain it to them. And as Chris said, it's easier to explain to 40 than it is to explain to 400. And that was... That seemed to be the biggest stumbling block, was that the information just didn't get out there. And they voted on something that they were not completely advised of, and I guess, based on their vote, they understood more after the fact than they did when they first initially voted.
I think it's important to note, one of the... I think the primary reasons both sides were interested in this is the savings. Substantial savings of the town. Town is a 50-50 provider for health care, which meant that 50% of the savings were going to accrue to the benefit of the employees, substantial, you know, $2,000 to $3,000 on a family plan per person, you know, some of the numbers we saw, depending on plans chose. So, I mean, we're talking about numbers that will dwarf, or maybe not dwarf, but will exceed the cost of living adjustment that they received in the last contract settlement on an annual basis. And that's a substantial amount of money for people, so...
And believe me, when I say I'm very sensitive to what the union employees, employees in this town, period, have to pay for things in terms of... So savings is a big plus. Did we know the savings based on what the rates are projected to be for next year, or how did that happen?
Correct. To the consultants, what they did is they took our... The whole process to get to this point, our consultants took our data directly from the health care carriers, Blue Cross and Harvard, and went to Blue Cross directly, went to Harvard directly, solicited quotes, saw rates that would be around 20% increases for next year on prices that they were given, and then explored the two other options, really, that are available for us, which is the GIC or the Maya Group, Massachusetts Inner Local Insurance Association. And we had some good conversations with Maya, but at the end of the day, it looked like the Maya increases would be in the few percents of an increase, whereas the GIC rates were clearly looking like they would be a 6% decrease. And so the spread was just too far. Wouldn't be worthwhile to go to Maya for that savings. Also, I think probably one of the biggest reasons was the fear of the GIC kind of evaporated a little bit. I think I said to these guys at the beginning, I couldn't imagine thinking that we would move into the GIC a few years ago. They had been a very large organization that wasn't very receptive to other people's input, and they had the ability to change rates. That was probably our biggest fear, that they could change rates in the middle of the year. Well, they can't do that anymore. Legislation passed several years ago that prohibit them from making mid-year rate changes, which was really a requirement of legislation, given the fact that, you know, it's okay for the state. The GIC runs all the state employees. It's okay for them to change rates mid-year for them, it's their budget, but not for us. We have no ability to adjust mid-year. If all of a sudden they say to me, "Hey, you know, halfway through the year, you're going to pay an extra 10%." And so the legislation that was introduced, I believe by Senator Donnelly, prohibited them from doing that without legislative approval. So, you know, we feel much more comfortable that the GIC can't, you know, do the things that they were able to do a decade ago. And to be frank, their health care plans look better than the ones we have. They have two plans, one of which is a plan called Unicare. It's essentially a Blue Cross product, doesn't have that title, but it's owned by Anthem, which is a Blue Cross company. And people are entitled to go to any doctor or hospital in the state of Massachusetts that's licensed to practice medicine. So I think that covers pretty much everybody. I can't imagine someone wanting to go see a doctor that's not licensed. So I think it was those two things that really... They're offering better plans at lower prices. You know, when you're shopping, generally, you buy what's better at a lower price. I think that's what we did.
So just to understand it, and thank you for that. So in the end, to condense it down, is the GIC was showing us a savings in rates. I'm assuming that Mayflower was an increase in rates based on...
Correct.
Discussions with providers like Blue Cross and...
Well, they don't... Mayflower is a self-insured program, so they set their own rates, but... And I sit on their board, and their rates were going to go up this year. Now, I've been banking on a 10% rate increase, which I think will be in the 10% to 15% range, but recently, the Mayflower group has taken a number of changes to lower that. I don't believe any of those changes will lower it below zero in any way, shape, or form, and we're looking at a 6% reduction here, so...
So we don't know what the rates are yet for Mayflower, but we expect it to be... Somebody expects it to be an increase.
Correct. Yep.
Ted, it's also what I'm remembering from last year, is that as the Mayflower group's been setting rates, am I correct that they depleted their fund balance?
Not...
That their fund balance is significantly lower than it has been?
Well, they've used their fund balance, but it's not completely depleted.
Yeah.
And different communities, as they go through this process, have suggested that they're in worse shape, I think, than they really are. To be frank, I think it's better for them that we're not there. We looked at our claims history, and the last year, we paid less in premiums to the group than we received in benefits. And we're the largest member of the group. So that means that...
And that was a flip from the previous few years, I think.
Well, in the last two years, we were close to the number, but I think other people were doing better than us. So my guess is, for the last three years, Hingham has probably been impacting the other communities within the group by higher rates because of our claims. We're the northernmost community, and all of our... Most of our employees go to the hospitals within the northern ranges of Plymouth County and Suffolk County. So those hospitals are much more expensive than in southern Plymouth County, where you have Jordan, or you have, you know, Morton, or, you know, you can go to Wareham, Toby, and St. Luke's. So again, higher cost structure, but clearly, Mayflower gave us a 15% rate increase next year. The rate increase this year would be a positive number. I think they would argue that they can get it down to the 4% to 6% range. I would say that that's very unlikely. I think it'll be more towards the 10% range. And a 10% versus a 6% on the negative side is a big swing. It's your budget.
So just one other question. In terms of going forward, is there anything we need to be concerned about? And believe me, I didn't realize in terms of legislation that there's no... They can't be changed within the year. But in terms of the state, in terms of... And you can please tell me, because I don't know a lot about it, in terms of the funding, is there funding from the state that we have to rely on to keep these rates at a certain level?
So the GIC says no, but yet they've run deficits in the past, and the state has come in and paid a large portion of that. Would the state do that again? My guess is probably, because it's... 90% of the GIC are their employees. 90% of those cost structures are them. And so my guess is the state will continue to put budget dollars in the GIC, to which we benefit from, because we're part of it. And we never were, and we weren't. I think $192 million went in either last year or the year before, at the end of the year, when they were having problems, not last year, two years ago. So that's likely to occur. If it doesn't, could the rates go higher? Sure. But here's what we know. We know in year one, we have a 6% decrease. We know that we're locked in for two more years, and that our increases cannot be, because we're not rated individually, we're related with a pool, the increases over the last several years have been less than 10%. And we're projecting increases in the 6% to 9% range going forward for the next two years with the GIC. That's not what I would project with Mayflower. I would continue to project rates in the 10% to 15% range. I think that's where we are. After five years of zeros, which was, you know, very good at the time, I think we've... They have a little catch-up to do. So even good experience will slow them down a little bit.
In terms of that point you just made, Ted, I was thinking about that. So you said we're locked in for two more years?
Correct. When you join the GIC, it's a three-year commitment. When you join May, it's a two-year commitment. Our health care consultants prized us all, industry... I'm aware of it, because I've done this before with private self-insured funds, but you can't change health care carriers every year. You have to stay with a carrier for at least two years, because no one else will take you. If we... Let's just say we wanted to leave next year. After we joined the GIC, we want to go in '19 somewhere else. On July 1 of 2018... 2017, next summer, we would call for the data from the group, but we wouldn't have any, because we had just started. So we'd have to wait, and by the time we get data, we're going to have three months' worth of data at best before we have to make that decision to tell the GIC we're leaving, same situation we're in now, a year later. And we won't have enough good data to solicit any quality bid. No underwriter will rate us, because we have no good data left. So they'll use... They'll rate us off our experience in the past, which hasn't been very good. So we wanted a commitment for two years wherever we went. GIC requires a three-year commitment. We're not concerned about that, frankly, because we think their rates will be below where we are right now.
So you're saying you think the next two years, there may be a 6% to 9% increase per year?
Per year. That's what I project going forward with the GIC. And I'll be budgeting accordingly, probably a 10% increase.
And you think Mayflower is going to be higher than that?
I think they will be.
But this year's a savings, obviously, but the next two years...
Correct. But even if they're just a wash, you know, the first-year savings will cover that upfront.
As an individual, you know, to say if my family could get health insurance rates and know that they'd only go up 6% to 9% in the next two years, that would...
With a 6% decrease in year one?
That would be really welcome for my family. We don't have that available, and I think, like every family, you know, wherever you get your health care, those costs are escalating. It's obviously real important. You know, we also, I think, for every family, it's looking and saying, you know, what are the consequences of moving in terms of, you know, not just the administrative aspect of it, but what does it mean for the care I'm going to have? What does it mean in terms of, you know, do I have to... Do I get to keep the same doctors? And the answer is yes. What, you know, what are my copays? What are my deductibles? And I think really all those things matter, and I think that, you know, for many people, health care is an important part of the compensation package. And so, you know, I appreciate the process where we have the different votes of the union, because that tells me that the folks who are going to be, you know, receiving these benefits and working in these plans, that you've sort of made a choice. And I know that's a complicated, and for every family, it's a really... It's a really personal decision. So I really appreciate the time investment of both of you and of everybody. I would also say, you know, that the three-year thing doesn't really kind of bother me, because I really don't think we want to be flip-flopping our insurance all that often. I think that, you know, even in this circumstance where you're keeping your doctors and things, it is... It's a little bit of a change, and we...
We have to re-enroll 1,200 people.
Right, right.
They all have to come in with their marriage certificates, if they're married, their birth certificates for their children. You know, you'll see a budget item for a benefits coordinator. You know, there's a cost to doing this. We don't want to do it every year, and we haven't.
I would also say that I know... I remember that last year, you know, in the last few years with the budget, we've oftentimes relied on savings in group insurance to help us be able to continue to operate at the service level we are. We, you know, up until this past year, you know, we maybe have half a million dollars of savings in health care, and that would allow us to do things like, you know, another deputy fire chief and other things that we've done in the schools everywhere else. This past year, we not only didn't see savings, but we saw that 15% increase. And I know in conversations that I had with folks from Mayflower and really kind of pushing, the one thing that I heard a lot was that the reason the rates were lower in the previous few years was because some of the fund balance was being used to subsidize those rates. I'm not arguing with that decision, but it seems to me that that means that you're at risk for not being able to insulate your members when the rates go up, as they did this past year. I worry that that could continue as well. And I think about it not only for the town, but I think about it for individuals. I also know that there are people who work in this town largely for the benefits, largely to receive those benefits and how important those are, and I think about that in a special way as well.
I can crystallize that for you. Two years ago, we got our first negative paycheck. We actually had to ask an employee to give us money that week to work here, because they got a negative check. Their health care was more than the cost of their salary. Their health care was more than their salary. So we've seen that. It's our reality in a number of places, and that's why people are very focused on this, as we are. I just want to be clear with Plymouth County, Mayflower Health Care Group, you know, yes, they did five years of zeros, terrific, it helped us, but I don't want anyone to get the impression that... And I know you'd said this earlier, Mary, that someone had told you this, and there is misinformation all around out there. They've used a substantial part of their fund balance, they've not used all their fund balance.
Absolutely.
They're a solid, you know, stable financial organization, and a lot of communities get great health care for them. This is the decision for us.
You know, we've... And I look at it and say, we've had a wonderful experience with the Mayflower system. We've had, you know, it's been a great experience. I look at this and say, this is a business decision for us as a board, this is a family decision for members of the PEC, and, you know, if we...
From my perspective...
...to leave the Mayflower, we thank them very much for it. ...to leave the Mayflower, we thank them very much for, for it, great experience, and, you know, this is, this is a business and a family decision.
Absolutely. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want the board to get any impression from me whatsoever that this is an indictment in any way or negative to Mayflower. You know, they run a great program, they've provided some very interesting options in different situations, and they've done some innovative things, but for us, this is a business decision that's best for us.
Okay. I think it's all been said. Ted, Tom, gentlemen, I want to thank you for your hard work. Paul, thank you for your questions, drawing out the facts. Mary? I'll entertain a motion to adopt and enter into an agreement with the Public Employees' Commission, also known as PEC, which will transfer all town health insurance subscribers from Mayflower Municipal Health Group to the Group Insurance Commission as of July 1, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate all your hard work. Thank you, guys.
Good to see you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay. And that, ladies and gentlemen, really was the impetus behind having this meeting tonight, so that we could meet the time requirements needed to do what we just did. At this point, I would like to let you know that we will have our regular meeting on Thursday. We're entering into the budget season, so we'll be starting that.
We're also starting a half an hour late on Tuesday, on Thursday, correct? So I want you to note that for the record.
So 7:30 for those that are interested. Tom, is there anything you'd like to...
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Ted?
Second.
Second.
Good night, everyone. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.